All right, good evening. I now call the May 7th, 2024 Regular Meeting of the City Council to Order. This evening, we have Brian Nevins, our Erlanger Police Chaplain, to give our invocation. It's wonderful to see you. You can click the little button, there you go.
There we go, thank you. If you would, please join me in prayer. Our Lord and God, we come to you with all prayer and supplication with thanksgiving, and the promise that you give peace that passes understanding with the mind of Christ. Thank you for your great provision, for a great place to live, for this privilege of gathering and self-government, recognizing the responsibilities and freedoms it carries. We thank you for the hope that comes with each new day. We bring before you the memory of those who have gone before us in protection of our freedoms, as we celebrate that this month. We thank you for them, knowing that you understand what it means to offer the greatest sacrifice. Your word says, "Greater love has no one than this than to lay down one's life for his friends." And so, we thank you for those who have gone before us, who did just that. We ask that our city officials would be protective of those precious and very expensive rights, and take their responsibilities to the residents of our friendship city with the gravity and wisdom they need and deserve, without personal agendas or pursuits. That they be women and men of virtue, integrity, and with a heart of humble service. In your word, you promise that if any need wisdom to simply ask, and so, we ask that, knowing that you will give it generously. Therefore, we pray for Mayor Fettie, for our city manager, Mr. Glennon, for this assembled council. Hold them to a high standard of integrity, especially since you will judge them for every action. We pray for Chiefs Raider and Godsey, and all our first responders. We ask that you keep them safe as they work to keep us safe. And we thank you for all of their service. In your grace, grant them wisdom and insight for the needs of our citizens, and a single mission in their pursuits to meet them. We ask for your blessing upon them and their families, Father. Grant them personal peace in their lives, joy in their task, so that they might carry out their responsibilities again with the heart of the resident. We pray for the agenda said before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you, and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city. And as in the most blessed name of Jesus, that I ask these things. Amen.
(Inaudible)
All right, Ms. Hoffman, if you can please take role. Ms. Nicely.
Present.
Mr. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Jasper Lucas.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
All right, thank you so much. You've received a copy of the minutes for the April 16th, 2024 Special Council Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, all entertaining motion that we adopt is presented. Mr. Hermes, Ms. Reckers, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. You've also received a copy of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, all entertaining motion that we adopt is presented. Ms. Reckers, Ms. Kyle, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried. All right, our first special presentation this evening is our Business Spotlight. And this evening, we have from AAV Security, Andrew Cordenbrock and John Donahue. If you'd like to come forward to the microphone, it's actually already turned on for you. Thank you so much for being with us this evening.
I appreciate you guys having us, absolutely. So, yeah, the 2641 Crescent Springs Pike Building has been in my family for, you know, 30-plus years. So, you know, it's a great honor to still have partnership in the building. We did put a lot of money into the building, you know, with the help of City of Erlanger, especially Mark. The sign grant that we got is going to make it, you know, really pop off of the Crescent Springs Pike. So, there's four total owners of the building. There's four total businesses in the building, including ours, Access Audio and Video. They're all thriving companies, and we should be there for, you know, a long time. So, we're looking to, you know, make more improvements to the building moving forward. So, again, I appreciate you guys helping out with the sign, and I'll turn it over to John. I won't bore you with too much, too many details about it, but Access Audio and Video, John's my partner in this, so he'll tell you a little bit about what we do. Basically, we just handle residential and commercial monitoring for security and fire. We've been in business for almost 30 years. Me and Drew purchased the company from my previous owner, who I worked for, for 20-plus years. And, yeah, we're still kicking it and doing great, and can't wait for the future, see what it brings. So, thank you.
Very good. Go ahead.
So, I got to see their, the inside of their office. It's really pretty, but Andrew did tell me that he went to Covington Catholic, and we played against each other in soccer in the year 2000. I'm not going to hold that against him, that they did beat us.
He has to respond.
No response needed. We're very happy that you're in Erlanger. Thank you for your investment and continued to test. Thank you.
All right. The next special presentation is one of my absolute favorite things to do of the entire year. It's to present our Community Achievement Scholarship. And, let's see here, so the city received five applications for our post-secondary education, $2,500 scholarship. The 2024 recipient received 556 points from the six community judges. So, the judges are not made up of council members or anybody on city staff. They're all community partners that have participated in this program for many, many years, and we're very appreciative of their support. So, our 2023 recipient, Riley Maddox, is here to, is present to tell us about her first year of college, and then she will announce this year's recipient.
Hi, everyone. My name is Riley Maddox, and I was lucky enough to benefit from the scholarship last year. I just finished my first year at the University of Louisville. I am a political science and philosophy double major. I'm pre-law, too, so hopefully, I will be attending law school in the next, and I guess it'll be four years from now. Yeah, my first year of college has been amazing. I am a nationally-ranked orator for Mut Court. I joined our Mut Court team at the University of Louisville. We went to Nationals. I was the first freshman to go to Nationals from the school, so very exciting. I joined a sorority, and I'm the director of philanthropy for that sorority. And I was recently elected as an executive member of my scholarship program, the McConnell Scholarship. So, I serve on the board now, and I will serve on that next year as well. So, I'm just very grateful for the scholarship. It's really made college possible for me, and I'm extremely thrilled to be here to announce the 2024 City of Erlanger Post-Secondary Scholarship. And that winner is Lily Overbay. Yeah, you can join me. Lily is a senior at Notre Dame Academy, my alma mater as well, where she participates in Girl Up, Drug-Free Club, Spanish, Notre Dame Urban Education Center, and Investment Club, and has also been a member and a manager for the Notre Dame volleyball team. Lily has been a member of the National Honor Society, Sociedad Honoraria Hispanica Honor Roll, and is the benefactor of the Martha Mayor Tawney Scholarship. Lily believes in community service and has volunteered for the Knights of Columbus, Easter Seals Redwood, and at Lakeside Christian Church. Please join us in congratulating Lily Overbay.
To all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas, Lillian Overbay of Erlanger is the 13th recipient of the Erlanger Post-Secondary Education Scholarship. Ms. Overbay is a senior at Notre Dame Academy, where she participates in Girl Up, Drug-Free America, Spanish, and Investment Clubs, and has been a member and manager for the volleyball team. Ms. Overbay has received numerous honors and awards. Ms. Overbay believes in community service and has volunteered with the Notre Dame Urban Education Center, Knights of Columbus, Easter Seals Redwood, and Lakeside Christian Church. Ms. Overbay is looking forward to attending the University of Kentucky and pursuing a degree in speech pathology. The City of Erlanger congratulates and wishes Ms. Overbay much success in her future. Now, therefore, I, Jessica Fettie, Mayor of the City of Erlanger, Kinton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim May 8th, 2024, to be Lillian Overbay Day in Erlanger, and do commend this observance to all of our citizens, given under my hand and the seal of the City of Erlanger on this day, May 7th, 2024. Congratulations. So, the next special presentation is the Fire and EMS Intern Program. Chief Godsey is going to take the mic for a little bit.
Mayor, council, guest, just wanted to kind of touch on our intern program. This is something that we started this year, that I had requested in the budget, and I wanted to bring our interns. We have two interns that have been in the program. I wanted to bring them in and give them the opportunity to speak about the experience they've had with our intern program. So, Mariah Estes and Ben Glasscock, if you could come forward. So, they've been in the intern program since August, so about nine months. They're coming to the end of the school year. So, I kind of wanted to allow them some time, kind of see how things went, kind of let them kind of feel the program out. They are kind of like our guinea pigs. I mean, they are the first ones, so they're going to give us as much feedback as they can to tell us if this is something that has benefited them, benefited us, and if this is something we can carry on. So, I will turn the mic over to Mariah and let her say a few words.
I'm Mariah. I was, oh, I'm an intern at the fire department, and having the opportunity to be an intern is something that I would, like, have never imagined, like, of even being part of the city. Like, at the beginning of last year, like, I had no idea of what I wanted to do after high school. I had no plans of going to college or anything, and this internship really made me want to be something. And I became an EMT. I have been doing college credit for doing a fire science degree, and I'll be finished with that in December, as well as I want to go through paramedic school in January of next year. But it's really given me, like, the opportunity to have a chance and learn from Erlanger and have the experiences that I've had so far, and made those connections of everybody in the department and everybody outside of the city as well. And I'm happy you guys have given me the chance to have that experience to grow as a person, and I would have never imagined talking in front of the city and having the chance to do this. So, I do appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity, and everyone, the chiefs and everybody at the fire department. So, I do thank you guys for that.
My name is Ben Glasscock. It is a great honor to be here tonight, and glad to speak to everyone and the citizens of the City of Erlanger. About nine months ago, maybe a little bit longer, honestly, about a year ago, I graduated from high school. I always wanted to be a first responder when I was younger, and, you know, I grew up in Erlanger. I went right down the, I grew, went to high school down the street, right at Dixie Heights High School. And when I heard that Erlanger was opening up internships for fire EMS, I was like, oh, I got to get on this. You know, this is my city. It's amazing to get back to where I came from, and so far, my experience with the City of Erlanger has been phenomenal. It's kind of, it's kind of weird, but this being my first place I've ever been in this career, it's kind of like that first love, almost. It's really weird, but the City of Erlanger is amazing. My experience with the internship program has been amazing. Nine months ago, I had no fire experience, no EMS experience, and now I am rounding third, finishing my fire science degree, and I'm already an EMT. And eventually, I'd like to go to paramedic school and continue to serve the City of Erlanger. And I just want to thank you all for this fantastic opportunity. The internship is amazing. It has taught me so much. It's made me grown up a lot, mature, and just become the best version of myself I can be. And I would like to thank you, City Council, and the City of Erlanger, and the citizens that gave me this opportunity.
So, these two, when they came to us, like they said, they had very little experience. What we require them is to do 12 hours a week with us. These two rock stars have said that's not enough, and they have done 24-hour shifts with us. So, they said that they wanted to get the whole experience, so we've allowed them to be able to do those 24-hour shifts with us, and I think it's worked out really well. They've been amazing. They were doing amazing in school. The program actually offers them $5,000, and then in turn, they give us their time and effort. They go out with a cruise, do hose testing, hydrant testing, hydrant painting, all the drills, all the work that we do, they go right along with us. So, it's an amazing program. It really brings them into the career. And I will have to say, you know, thank you to them, but also Frank Santy back there. He's kind of the head of the intern committee. They have done an awesome job. So, they, not only the training and everything that they're getting, they're actually, they set them up for success for their first job as well. So, they go over stuff that they might encounter in interviews for this career as well. So, they've done an amazing job, too. So, right now, I'd just like to open it up for any quick questions, if anybody has any questions.
I don't have a question, but I just am amazed. This is amazing. It's so wonderful to see all these young people, including the scholarship winner, you know, and all the amazing things that they do. So, there's hope for this country after all.
Any other questions?
What do you think we could do to improve our program? I don't, I mean, I'm not saying we need to do anything, but if there is anything, would you, would you recommend that we do? And would you tell other people, would you tell your peers that you think this is a good idea?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and answer that. So, so far, the program's been amazing. I've met a lot of fire recruits and EMT students along my journey with my internship. And there was a lot of other internships out there, but the way that I think Erlanger sticks out above all the other internships is that we, from what I've noticed, is that Erlanger offers us more hands-on experience and being able to make runs with the EMS crew and the fire crews, and they give us more opportunities for training, you know. They treat us like a part of the crew, not just as like an intern, like we're a part of the firehouse EMS family. And that is one thing that I can't, it's amazing. It's really amazing, and I'm honestly, the only thing I can say that can be approved upon is I would like to see more interns, because it's awesome. It's a fantastic experience. Erlanger's internship has Erlanger's internship has completely made my life, my whole life doing 180.
I was kind of hoping you were going to say we needed more interns, because we're getting ready to talk about a budget, and that was real helpful for, for what we want to do. So that's what I was hoping.
I forgot my wallet. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I'm just so incredibly proud of this whole team, this department. You're changing their lives, and you have the potential to change so many more by the additional interns that are going to come into our world. And I don't know, it's just, it's really fantastic, Chief. You've done well. Thank you.
Just to let you guys know, we've shared it on our Facebook, but we are accepting applications now. So if you have family, they don't necessarily have to be straight out of high school, but if you are interested in obtaining a degree, we are currently accepting applications until May 10th. So just wanted to also put that out there. All right. Thanks, guys. Great. Thank you so much. All right. Next proclamation, or next special presentation is our City Government Proclamation. All right. So to all to whom these presents shall come, whereas the month of May honors several individuals and departments throughout the City of Erlanger. During the month, the City will be paying tribute to our City Clerk, police officers, EMS, and Public Works employees. Let us recognize our City Clerk and the administration team. The City Clerk and team serve as the link between the citizens of Erlanger, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of government at other levels. The City Clerk's office is the information center of the city. Let us recognize the officers of the Erlanger Police Department. They serve Erlanger by safeguarding life and liberty, by protecting the citizens against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent. The police officers are the protectors of the city. In recognizing the safeguarding of lives, the Erlanger Fire EMS Department's members of Emergency Medical Services engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. The EMS are the caregivers of the city. The care of the city is also vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of the Public Works employees. The health, safety, and comfort of Erlanger greatly depend on the services they provide. The Public Works employees are the keepers of the city. Now therefore, I Jessica Fetti, Mayor of the City of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th through the 11th, City Clerk Week; the week of May 12th through the 18th, National Police Week; the week of May 19th through the 24th, Public Works Week; and the week of May 19th through the 25th, Emergency Medical Services Week in Erlanger, and do commend this observance to all of our citizens given under my hand and the seal of the City of Erlanger on this day, May 7th, 2024. So congratulate our wonderful employees. Next item on the agenda is comments of those other than council members, also known as public comment. First name on the list is Vito La Court.
My name is Vito La Court, and I am the trusted advisor of the Hive Restaurant in Erlanger. Part of my functions, I do interviews. And I had the privilege of interviewing an Erlanger resident who is a single mom of five, and she's had some abuse in her life, and she's been challenged. And she's looking for a job at the Hive because it's close enough for her broken-down car to get her back and forth to work, and she can help support the five children. Dad's somewhat of a deadbeat. He spent some time in jail. The Erlanger police had to respond to abuse that she took, and she has a restraining order in place. During our conversation, one of the things that she brought out to me was the police resource officer. She proceeded to talk about the list of things that this person did for her, to help her, to help her recover her life, to help her get her feet back on the ground, to give her five children a reason for hope. And I couldn't be more reminded of the government doing something that is actually positive and actually helpful. And when you discuss budget, I would, I would like you to consider discussing the expansion of that program. There are plenty of people in the City of Erlanger who need that kind of help. I don't know if the resources allocated can get to all of them, but I'm sure it's something of worthy consideration. And at the end of the day, it brought to mind ethics. What is ethics? In government, ethics is helping people, doing the right thing when you can, as you can, doing it the right way, staying within the rules and the guidelines that are set forth for how to get things done intelligently and properly. Good government is your goal. Ethic, ethical treatment of everyone inside of the process, and I mean everyone, should be everybody's highest achievement that they strive for. Bad government, the first thing to go is ethics. That's when people start thinking that they can do whatever they want, however they want, and they disregard the rules. They disregard the process, the procedures, and they take it upon themselves to do whatever the heck they want. So I would like to see our city government continue to act in an ethical manner, to continue to promote ethical behavior, ethical things, find ways to solve problems like the police social worker, that promote a positive image of government, because we all know, pay attention to national politics, and it's ugly as can be. And ethical is the last thing that you can talk about any of them. So the shining light has to be city government, and that's you guys. Thank you very much. Police Resource Program, be proud of yourselves for that. Expand it if you can.
In what capacity would you recommend we expand it? Adding an additional resource? I mean, Marianne is spectacular.
I won't, I won't pretend to be the expert. I'll leave that to the experts to tell you how to expand it. But however you can put more resources towards helping people, whatever your role is, I would suggest that you guys find how to do that the proper way, and spend money intelligently. Spend money on things that are important to make a difference in people's lives. I'm not going to, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I, two of them, three of them, four of them? You know what I'm saying? I mean, you have the budget, you guys have to work that all out. I don't want to be part of that process. I just want your consideration to be always moving forward in an ethical way that puts the citizens first and all of the other stuff kind of on the back burner, whatever it may be. Hey, do what's right all the time.
Thank you. Do you think it'd be possible for us to talk with this single mother so we can better understand?
I haven't hired her yet, but as you can tell, I'm leaning in that direction.
Okay.
So I would ask her permission, and if she's okay with that, then yeah, sure. I have no objection to it.
It'd be good for us to understand.
And I do plan on hiring her, just so that you know. I mean, she's a young woman that came in, I think she's 26, 27 years old, willing to do anything. I'll wash dishes, I'll sweep the floor, I'll serve, I'll be a barista. I don't care. I just need a job, and you guys are the people I could get to, and I hear nothing but good things. So when, when somebody comes in like that, you find them a job. You find them something to do. You find them a way to be successful and get them into a position where you're making a difference. That's what the Hive, I mean, we have a lot of local citizens work at the Hive. I don't know if anybody realizes that, but some lifelong citizens that work at the Hive. And we do that on purpose. The whole intention of the Hive is to feed the community.
Thank you, Mr. La Court.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next on the list is Jeff Nicely.
Mayor, Council, thank you for letting me be here tonight. I'm also here to talk about government helping people. I think that's a great, great concept. I think that's why we're all here. This was brought up a few weeks ago at the last meeting, and we all were sure that it would be taken care of. Unfortunately, we're right back here talking about it again. I feel like we're in a Twilight Zone. Before I get into that, I feel like this is being blown away, it's becoming a big mountain that it shouldn't be. Mr. Hermes, trying to bring up intimidate fellow council people with an ethics violation, a potential ethics violation, is absolutely absurd. I would hope that anybody on council, anybody up here, anybody in this room would stand up for what's right and would try to help people, and especially the residents of this community who voted you into that position. But to give a little bit of background for folks that don't know, back on March 28th, Duke Energy removed trees on city property over on Alice Street, right behind the overpass. It's created an ugly situation, but more importantly, a very dangerous situation for anybody that's using that driveway or getting even near the top of that hill. The entire property we're talking about, in question, is city-owned. The driveway and the hillside is all city-owned. What I'm referring to when I say the driveway, it's the old Alice Street. When they put in the overpass, they moved Alice Street over, left Old Alice Street. That is now, it serves as the only access to my dad's house. Most of you all know him. He served two years, two terms on council. He's almost 90 years old. We're very concerned. What we're asking for is nothing special, just a four-board fence installed at the top of that hill. The same type of fencing that the city has all around town, miles of it, that serves no purpose other than for appearance in most cases. So while this one would certainly make the location look nicer from Dixie Highway, it would primarily and most importantly be for safety. We could be talking about an ambulance, these interns that were here, a police cruiser, anything going over that hill. If they had to do a call there at night, or it's dark, you have to pull in the driveway and back out, or you have to back in and pull out. That's your options, and if you, anybody here have seen that, it's not a safe situation for anybody using that property. We could be talking also about a neighborhood child doing what children do, riding bikes and walking down that hill. They've already started doing it. It's just a matter of time. If they wreck, there's a busy road right below that for them to get hurt. We're only asking for what was already there. There were matured trees with trunks up to 12 to 14 inches in diameter. I know someone in council have seen that. They created a natural safety barrier. Now that they're gone, all we want is another safety barrier put back. It's not improving any private property or anything like that, and I hardly think putting horse fence across a front yard in a city dwelling is going to increase any property value or improve it. It is strictly for safety. I think it's ludicrous that the city paid, they have a temporary fence put up, told council and the public that the situation was top priority and being handled. Two days later, they paid again to have that very fence taken back down. Our mayor told one of the local news channels, I quote, "There was a recommendation from our city attorney that it doesn't serve a public purpose in order to use taxpayer dollars on it. So it would only impact two properties, and technically, because it's a hillside and it's owned by the city, there's not any true need to make any type of change to what's existing." What does that mean? The city has acknowledged that there's a dangerous situation. It's an accident waiting to happen, if you will. Since when did someone getting seriously hurt or killed on city property not serve a public purpose? We are not asking for anything that any resident in this city shouldn't be entitled to or receive from their governing body. This is a request for a fence on public, public property to keep public safe. If you want to say that only bits one or two properties, I would argue that is not the case. But what about the privacy fence around Rainbow Park? There's only several houses that border that park. That privacy fence is only serving those immediate houses. I would also like to remind everyone of the four-board fence that the city installed on railroad property by bonded lock. That, that work was halted until an agreement was worked out with the railroad. They stopped that work. There's four-board fencing on Erlanger Road, and you're striking spare. There's four-board fencing at the intersection of Stevenson and Turkeyfoot. There's more of it at Brightleaf and Turkeyfoot. Again, we have miles of this fencing installed for looks and appearance. Let's do this for safety and appearance. And I'm almost finished.
You're at six minutes.
I'm sorry?
You're at six minutes. We allow three.
Okay, I'll read, I'll read it real fast. Let's do this for safety and appearance. I've been in this city for over 50 years. I grew up here, have a local business here, my family's here. Erlanger has always been known that it cares about its people, all of its people. The sad thing is, we're not talking about a huge amount of money. We've gotten quotes for a fence. $4,000 is what we're talking about. At the last meeting, Peter Glenn threw out numbers of $20,000 to $30,000. We're not talking about that. We're talking about $4,000. He also said that as soon as we get a third price in place, we'll be moving forward and making sure it's a safe situation. I come to you tonight to please follow through with that, and don't wait. Please don't wait. Make this a safe situation and do it soon. I beg you. Thank you.
Next is Randy Blankenship. If you could keep it to three minutes, I, I-
I have a question.
We're going to discuss in a little bit.
Well, we, like other people, ask questions.
Go ahead, go ahead.
If we're not going to time everyone, we're not going to time anyone.
We did time.
No, you didn't.
Okay, but we did. Did we?
So the first speaker, what was his time?
It was about four minutes.
Okay.
We raised our hand at three. I did the exact same thing. I raised my hand at three.
Go ahead, Randy. You've got the floor.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm going to speak about the same topic, topic that Mr. Nicely just addressed. I will do my best to avoid repeating what he said, because I know when I was on the other side of the bench, I didn't like to hear the same thing over and over, so I'll do my best to avoid that. But I do believe this does present a safety issue to the public, and it's not simply for the benefit of one or two people. If you've been there, and I know some of you have, you can see there, there's a drop-off of 18 to 20 feet in spots. And I think that does pose a risk of injury, not just to Mr. Nicely, although that to me is important, but it poses a risk of injury to the public in general. Anyone riding a bike, for example, might be careening across that area, go flying over that 20-foot embankment and suffer very severe injuries. Now, I know the city attorney has opined that there may be some immunity here, and the city could not incur liability. I've dealt with immunity issues before, and Mr. Gatlin and I have disagreed on legal points in the past. I suspect we will in the future. But the point is, it does create some potential legal liability, in my opinion, and sometimes even on those immunity issues, when the city is immune, sometimes the employees are not. And what happens a lot of times is, the city may be immune, but the employees get sued. And I don't think you want that either. But even more than the legal side of things, I think we just look at the moral of it. We know there's a hazard here. Do we want to pose a risk to our city people? Do we want to pose risk of injury to people that we know about? We know this is dangerous. We know it has the potential for danger. I would submit that the responsible thing, setting aside the legalities of it, and it's unusual for me to say set aside the legalities, I suppose, but even if we set aside the legalities of it, this does pose a danger to the public in general, as well as these individuals. I would submit that the city should do what I think is the right thing, which is construct some type of fence or barrier there to protect the public. Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and just talk about this topic at this time. I'm going to give a kind of a condensed version of a narrative and timeline from, thank you, a narrative and timeline from Duke and a narrative and timeline from City Administrator Peter Glenn. Peter Glenn. Of course, this is a condensed version, because I don't think you guys want the full. So in our recent discussions concerning the tree trimming along Alice Street, the city has done extensive outreach to understand the issues of the property owners. From a city perspective, there are two main issues that we must consider first: public right-of-way issues and reliability of power service to our citizens. An ancillary concern which we have spent much time considering is beautification of this public space and taking, take feedback from property owners which abut the public right-of-way. Initially, Peter Glenn, Erlanger City Administrative Officer, engaged in discussions regarding vegetation cutbacks and right-of-way issues. He described efforts to understand concerns raised by the Nicely family and Duke Energy, with discussion spanning safety, beautification, and legal authority. These discussions occurred over several meetings, starting before Duke Energy's scheduled vegetation cutbacks on Alice Street. Peter demonstrated a significant level of compromise and willingness to find a resolution. He engaged in discussions with the Nicely's about potential alternatives to the vegetation cutbacks, including exploring beautification projects and safety measures for their property. Peter also reached out to Duke Energy to inquire about the possibility of delaying the scheduled cut-downs, showing his commitment to finding a mutually beneficial solution. However, despite his efforts, conflicts persisted, necessitating involvement with, from legal council and city departments. This underscores Peter's dedication to addressing community concerns and finding common ground, even in the face of complex challenges. In a parallel narrative, Ken Muth, Duke Energy Community Relations Manager, provided insights into Duke Energy's perspective. He outlined extensive outreach efforts to inform affected property owners, including the Nicely's, about the imminent need for trimming. On December 23rd, 2023, door hangers were placed on all impacted properties, and on January 24th, 2024, affected properties were notified via email approximately two weeks prior to the planned trim date on March 28th. Despite attempts at communication and clarification of legal authority, conflicts arose, necessitating involvement from legal council and city departments again. Both narratives underscore the importance of proactive communication and an adherence to legal obligations. They highlight Duke Energy's commitment to ensuring the safety and reliability of power service, while also recognizing community concerns. As we move forward, continued collaboration and understanding among all stakeholders will be crucial in finding a resolution that balances safety, regulatory compliance, and community interest.
One thing I just want to add before I'm going to turn the mic over to our city attorney is I've heard time and time again that the four-board horse fencing could be put up as a safety barrier. And we have said many times that it is not rated for that level of safety. Four-board horse fencing is not going to stop a car. So four-board horse fencing or guard rail, they are not the same. So I just wanted to add that clarification, because it was said multiple times about the four-board horse fencing being a safety, a safety option, and it is not. Mr. Gatlin?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to clarify some things and respond briefly to Mr. Blankenship's letter and kind of reiterate what I think the legal position of the city is on this issue, which is very different than, I mean, I think, I just want to clarify some things. So I thought it would be appropriate just to address a couple of things in Mr. Blankenship's letter, which is similar to what he said at the podium tonight, instead of responding in writing. You know, the quote that the city attorney believes that the protection of his citizens from harvest does not serve a public purpose. I don't think I said that in the email to you all. I don't think I've said that publicly. I don't believe that. And I'm going to go through my email and hit some of the highlights and go through the AG opinion as to kind of where I go with the public purpose argument, and ultimately, council certainly can make that determination if there is a public purpose here. And I don't want to get into the weeds on a couple of the cases that Mr. Blankenship cited. As he said, you know, lawyers can disagree on issues. You know, we have a Supreme Court that a lot of times will rule 5-4 on issues. But the City of Barbourville case that Mr. Blankenship cited, which is a city case, is really not applicable, because that was a four-fee service splash park, water park. And specifically, in fee situations, cities are not immune. So, you know, there are situations when cities have ministerial tasks that they go, you lose that immunity. Obviously, if a police officer is negligent and crashes a police cruiser, the city has liability for that police officer's negligence. That's a little different situation than we have here. The other thing is, the two cases that Mr. Blankenship cited is it related to the public purpose and that council ultimately decides that public purpose. I do agree with him that council can articulate that public purpose, but the two cases that he cited are kind of interesting. Those two cases involve loan programs, very similar to our small business grant program, where they were challenged that giving loans to private businesses, businesses did not certify a public purpose. And the court basically said, hey, there is a larger purpose here. You're trying to promote the economy. You're trying to promote public welfare, whatever. But I do agree with him that I think ultimately council can articulate the public purpose. So I want to kind of just reiterate kind of the email that I sent to council. I'm not sure everybody saw it. I'm not sure everybody read it. I was told by several people that it was confusing, and I apologize for that. So I just want to kind of hit a couple of the highlights. You know, it is my position, and not only my position, it is KLC's position. The KRS 652003 is, basically provides immunity in this situation. And what that statute says is that the exercise of discretion, and when the face of competing demands, the local government determines whether and how to utilize or apply existing resources. Now, the carve-out to that, as Mr. Blankenship brought up, is for ministerial acts. And I don't believe ministerial acts is appropriate here. Again, ministerial acts would be, once the city puts something in motion, says, hey, we are going to fix A, we are going to do B. If there then is some other form of tort or negligence or something, then the city would be liable in that situation. But again, my opinion, you know, I don't, I was a little just disappointed in the letter from Mr. Blankenship, because I don't think I ever take my position on any of this stuff lightly. I don't think I just callously make opinions. And I had consulted with KLC numerous times before I sent that email. And I received a follow-up email from Megan at KLC. "Jack, I agree with your analysis below that the Claims Against Local Governments Act codified in KRS 65200 protects the city from any liability if a person were to bring a tort action for personal injury or property damage because of the missing trees and the additional insight into the public purpose spending issue. As you have identified, KRS 652001 protects the city from liability from loss resulting in any defect, hazardous, blah, 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 blah." Now, the second part of my email, though, I think is just as critical. And the second part of my email is, okay, the question I was asked at the committee meeting was, does the city have liability? And my opinion is, we don't. And that's followed up by the opinion of KLC. Now, is there, you know, can anyone file a lawsuit on anything? Sure, right? $250, files you a lawsuit. But the second issue, I think, is just as critical. And what can the city do in this situation? So I go into that, and I say, hey, I found an Attorney General opinion. It's OAG Opinion 92.74, which involved a property owner that lost access to a county bridge that only benefited his property. And the Attorney General stated, it is, in our view, given the particular facts involved, the answer is no. The county is not responsible for repairing a bridge which through the county road system now serves one private residence. And further, the bridge you have asked about providing, as it does, access to a single private resident, does not serve a public purpose. So we have an AG opinion that a bridge to one house does not serve a public purpose. Frankly, we don't have an AG opinion as to what we do in a situation like this. We could seek an AG opinion, but that would take a lot of time. So I am very comfortable with council determine, if council wants to do something with this issue, if they want to allocate resources in the next budget cycle, if they want to direct the city to do something on this, I think council absolutely can articulate that there is a public purpose. I just think that we have to, in the record, establish what that public purpose is. I also brought up, and I don't think there's any traction from any side on this issue, but I also brought up another option that the city would have, which would be to close a portion of the public right-of-way. So as was kind of confirmed, I guess, by Vx and Vx on Thursday or Friday, and we'll pull it up here. I know that Mr. Nicely alluded to this, and I just want council to understand what we're dealing with here. And we don't have a final plat yet, but we do have that line in blue that was driven, or drawn by, who handled it?
Greg Larson.
Yeah, Greg Larson. And as you can see, that line in blue is where the property line of the Nicely's is at. So everything south of that red-blue line is the city right-of-way. And, you know, another option that the city council has, and again, this is council's option, and frankly, it's the Nicely's option, because KRS 82405 makes it very clear that council has to be the one that does it, and it has to be with consent of the adjoining property owners, is that the city could abandon a portion of that right-of-way, any portion they want to the south of it, saying that there's no use for the city, there's no purpose, there's no purpose for the city, and then that could be deeded to the Nicely's. Again, that only can happen if council wanted it to happen and if the Nicely's wanted it to happen. So, you know, I think we have four options as a city here. I think option one is to do nothing. I think option two is to look into this thought, to abandon a portion of the right-of-way to the Nicely's. Again, they would have to agree to it. I think option three would be if the city sees this as some type of beautification project and wanted to beautify that hillside. I certainly think that that is an option for the city. But again, that would be something that we would have to be directed from council, and that would have to be a part of the budget, and the scope and size and kind of how that builds into the beautification process. So I think those are our three options, or some combination of those three options. You know, I don't want to bore you all with any other stuff, but I've got all the court cases and AG opinions from Mr. Blankenship, if you want to copy. But that's all I have. I don't know if anyone has any questions on me. Again, I don't necessarily see this as a legal issue. I think, again, if council wants to do something, they can do something. I just don't think we have any obligation to do something. Yes, Ms. Kyle?
I think that we should go along with Peter's idea. They presented it at the Beautification Committee. Thought it was a great idea, the horse fence, put some low-growing vegetation on the hill, because it is quite ugly when you're driving down Dixie Highway. And I know the other spot on the railroad property was also. When I saw that we were doing something with the railroad property, I was just elated. I mean, that has been so ugly for so many years, driving down Dixie Highway, well, here's Erlanger, you know. Now, we have marked several of our areas. We get criticized for that. People don't like the fence. City's spending too much money, and that's not correct. I think that'd be a special, a perfect place to beautify, and we're not breaking any laws. It's city property, putting horse fence there and making it look beautiful. Now, whether or not we can do it really fast is the other problem, because we have a budget. And the city council, we're going into budget meetings, the 15th, I believe, that's the beginning, but the final budget won't be approved until June 18th. Okay. The other thing that I think would be a kind gesture of the city is to deed that property over to the Nicely's, if they want it. You don't want it. Okay, well, think about it. You know, just think about it. But anyway, regardless of whether that happens or not, I still think we should go with the beautification, because I thought that was a beautiful idea. Peter had beautiful drawings. And so I was really taken aback when, you know, all this happened, because I wasn't aware that that was going on. But that's just my opinion. I just think it'd be a nice place to beautify, because, like I said, you can, you can see it from Dixie Highway. Deliberately drove down Dixie Highway, so I could see, if I could see it. And it's just right there. So, and like I said, it's, you know, makes the city look nice. And I think the Nicely's would be happy with that also. So we're serving the double. And it's not like we're doing it because of a special person. It's, we're beautifying the city because it's our property, and we had talked about it anyway. So it was in the plans. So that's my two cents worth.
And I don't disagree with you. And when Peter brought that to the City Beautification Task Force, and we attacked it over with Steve Nicely about how it has to go through the budget process, and that all the city beautification dollars in this fiscal year's budget had already been allocated and expended. So, you know, putting it into the City Beautification Task Force, having it added to the list of projects and budgeted accordingly, I mean, that was presented as an option. However, the, again, just to reiterate the fact, the four-board horse fence is not a safety barrier. So-
Well, since he said we're not responsible or liable, I think the horse fence would be great, because at least it's something you can see.
Okay.
If I'm riding my bike, I see the horse fence. If I'm driving down the driveway, I see the horse fence, and I know there's a hill there. So, I mean, I'm at my own risk, actually.
Sure.
And like you said, you can sue anybody, anytime, for anything, you know. I can trip on a pebble in the middle of the road and say, okay, I'm going to sue the city. They left this pebble in the road. I mean, it's ridiculous, but yeah, you can do it if you want, if you want to spend your money. But, I mean, I just think the horse fence and that looked really nice on the, I think I'd be, you know, happy with it.
Okay. Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Thank you. I'm going to point out a couple of things and make a couple of comments. I appreciate Jack consulting KLC, but I also want folks to understand that KLC is not a governing body, and they are not the sole authority on anything. They can advise us, and we pay them dues to do that, but they don't really have the final say on anything. So they're just one source of advice. And I, you know, there hasn't been a Beautification Task Force meeting since this has been all brought up. So I was not aware that all the, that all the beautification dollars had been spent for this year. I would propose that we, solely for the purpose of beautification, put up the four-board horse fence as a reminder, as a visual reminder. I realize it's not a barrier. I don't think the Nicely's have claimed it's a barrier. They've said multiple times that they just want something visual there to say, this is the side of the hill. So, you know, I drove down that portion of Dixie Highway the other day towards this whole area. You've got this beautiful corner on one side by bonded lock, and then you've got this horrible-looking hillside on the next. And we're getting ready to have a finally, finally, a painted overpass right there in the middle. So this would look lovely over to the right, or the left, I'm sorry, to put up the horse fence. I just, you know, council has been told tonight and several times that we're the ones that have the decision-making ability here. So does this need to go in the, in the future budget as a specific line item? Or can we be assured, if this is what council wants, that the Beautification Task Force will move forward with this? Because typically, those projects of where those beautification dollars go, those specific projects don't necessarily come before council. But we're being told that we have to make the decision. So if we decide to fund the beautification projects, does that then mean that this will be part of it? That's my question.
I guess my question to you would be, if this is, I mean, we have had a City Beautification Task Force since this has come to light. It was on the caucus meeting night.
Yeah, that was, that was before the meeting, when all this was brought up.
It was in that City Beautification Task Force where this was presented as a beautification project.
Right. But council was not necessarily aware of everything until after that meeting. I'm just saying, I didn't know the full story until that counts, until the caucus meeting that night. So there's no way I could have known that I needed to attend the Beautification Task Force in order to say, I want this funded, because we didn't know that this was even really an issue.
And to be honest with you, we, we didn't want it to be an issue. We didn't think it would be an issue, because we thought we had found a really awesome solution of putting it into the City Beautification Task Force's hands and adding it to their project list. I think it was more of a surprise for all of us when we got the caucus meeting public comment. So, so I guess what my question to you guys would be is, so city beautification, the task force sets, they have the project list, and many of you guys are on that task force. So you guys are very familiar with how this works. Ms. Nicely, you are the chairperson. So we have- So we have the three projects that we try to incorporate into that, this budget year. And then we set the priority for, what, do we have the next five years? We have the next three years of priorities set out from your guys' recommendation. So this isn't coming from staff, or it's not coming from the executive branch, it's coming from the task force that is working together to prioritize that list. So my question would be, is this going to jump all the other projects? And I want you all to make that determination, and I guess that would be in a city beautification task force, that you would set that priority?
Sure, I mean, ultimately, it comes to council and the budget, but sure.
So as the mayor said, the beautification task force usually puts, we have a list of probably 30 different projects. And me and Peter kind of worked through those, came up with those through Public Works, just kind of going around the city, looking at things that we could try to improve on. Over the years, we have presented those to the task force to prioritize what they want to try to tackle the following year. This current year we're in, we're doing the street ID polls, the decorative polls, and that was a phased approach. Phase one was this year, phase two would be next year. And the other projects we have for next year were the depot sidewalk, and, excuse me, I can't, I know there's another one, I can't think of it off the top of my head, but we did prioritize. I'm not saying we can't move this forward. We might ask for more money in that budget line item if we wanted to, but that would be up to you, and we do present, usually present the three-year projects that the task force has come up with, to move forward with, so...
I just wanted to back up to Ms. Jasper Lucas. The beautification task force meeting, I am the chairperson on that, but it was not on the agenda, so you would not have known. I didn't know it was gonna be mentioned last minute either. So just for the record, thank you.
And just for the record, Peter Glenn did meet with councilwoman Diana Nicely prior to the city beautification task force to discuss this as an option, so she most certainly knew. What other questions? Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Nobody else on council would have known that it was gonna be discussed if it wasn't on the agenda.
I think it came up that day.
Right, and my whole point was that there's no way that council could have known that we needed to attend the beautification task force meeting to specifically discuss this if it wasn't on the agenda, and we weren't aware of the issue yet. That's all I'm saying.
I think where it was put into the agenda is, it was part of the budget conversation. So we were talking about our budget request. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sherry just confirmed.
If the budget was on the agenda, that's where it definitely...
Yeah. We were talking about what we were gonna allocate dollars for. That was one of the projects that had been asked, like, do we want to bump it up? For those of us that were in the meeting, we... Ms. Kyle?
Well, I mean, I wasn't aware of the whole situation, but when I attended the beautification meeting, I know we have different things lined up, like the butterfly park, and my concern is that we try to get the fence up on the top of the hill as soon as possible to show our goodwill, because, I mean, we do have that in the budget, and I'm sure it's gonna go. I just wasn't even aware that Duke had gone through and chopped all the trees down. So what I did is, my husband and I were out and about, and we stopped by the property so I could look at it and see, and I walked down the whole driveway, and I was just amazed at the history that's there. I'm always the history buff, and you could see part of the sidewalk in Mr. Donald Nicely's front yard, so that's besides the point. But anyway, when I was walking down there, I just thought, you know, we had talked about the fence, and I thought, this'd be a beautiful spot, and it does look bad. I mean, it looks awful. So to put that there would be really nice. And as you drive down Dixie Highway, because I did that next, or drove down Dixie Highway, it's right there, smack in your face. I mean, you can see it. So I would say, you know, we need, I personally think we should prioritize it, because what's gonna happen over the summer is, like, you've got all that junk there, you're gonna have a bunch of weeds growing up, and it just looks bad for the city. I just want to beautify it, so that's just my two cents.
Okay. Ms. Wilson, and then Ms. Rutgers.
I just want to say that it is a need that needs to be addressed sooner than later.
Ms. Rutgers?
So I have a couple of questions. We've talked about beautification as an option, we're talking about allocating tax dollars to additional beautification and adding this to the potential list. We've also talked about abandoning part of the property as an option. Have we, and we're also talking about safety. That's what's been all over the news, that's what's been in the paper, that's what's been leading, is safety, safety, safety. Have we had VIOX look at this to determine if this is, this is a true safety concern? Because I think that that's gonna sway my opinion on whether or not we abandon the property, whether we... I think it would look nice, because it does tie in, as Ms. Jasper Lucas said, as Vicki said, I drove past it multiple times with the bridge. Should it be painted this year? Would, I mean, it would all tie together, it fits with the whole aesthetic, but those, as Mr. Nicely stated, they serve no purpose. The fences serve no purpose other than decoration. But the whole argument for weeks and weeks, and every article in every news report is about safety. So me, as a councilwoman, as part of this governing body, I want assurance as to whether or not we have a safety issue. And that may, I mean, there's, I know we have an agreement with VIOX, I'm not sure if this is something that he has looked at, but I feel like that needs to be part of the conversation, because that's what we've been hearing about for the last month, and yet now we're talking about bushes and fourboards fence. Do you know what I'm saying? So, I mean, a lot of moving parts here, and it's more than just beautification. I'd totally support a reasonable sum as part of the dialogue of the task force to come up with whatever that is, and looking at an appropriation. Like, I'm happy to have that conversation, but all I've heard about for 30 days is safety.
All right. So if we do want to do some type of survey of that sort, it's not gonna be something that's incorporated into their retainer. So it is something that we are gonna have to spend dollars on, and, I mean, the idea that it's 18 to 20 feet is inaccurate. I mean, the idea that it...
I've seen steeper grades on driveways in brightly, like, to be honest, but I'm not, I'm a finance person, I'm not a civil engineer, so...
There's steeper grades on Commonwealth.
I'm just saying, if this will, if it's an aesthetic issue, let's address it as an aesthetic issue, it does tie into the decor, the decor, you know what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
We'll talk about it, come up with a reasonable sum as part of our process, but if this is about safety, then let's make it about safety, right? So I just, I need transparency there, because all I've heard for the whole time is about safety, and I'm not an expert on safety.
Yeah, I think I'm 100% in agreement with Rebecca on this. I feel like we keep talking about it, because the goal line keeps changing, the story keeps changing. There's so many inaccuracies in the stuff that's been reported, and the things that have been said. If we can come to the determination that we're trying to solve a safety issue, I agree 100%, we should be solving a safety issue. If we're trying to solve an aesthetic issue, then we should solve the aesthetic issue. This is not something that we need to be deciding overnight. I know it is the number-one top priority for the Nicely's. This is not a number-one top priority for the city, in my opinion. This is something that we can talk about, we can discuss, we can design, and we can come up with the right solution over time. This is something that's gonna be, and really, what I kind of thought of as we were talking about this, and it's something that's come up a number of times in the past. For this beautification task force, maybe what we should do is create a line item that is fixing the things that Duke does, you know. So, and I think Duke would probably be willing to give the city some money each year for that, but we've had this come up a number of times, where Duke has done things, made people upset, left things in an unsightly manner, and we have to go back and fix it up. Let's keep in mind, the trees are gone. The city didn't cut them down. You know, now we're left holding the bag, trying to figure out how to fix this. The trees were unsightly, there's no doubt about it. This was an issue every year. Every year, we had to address this hillside, which isn't even on Nicely property, but they would come out and give the workers hell every year, because they wanted it trimmed a certain way. I really don't blame Duke for cutting it down all the way and not having to deal with it for a while. I don't disagree that we should do, that we can do something, I just don't think that it's something that has to be decided right now, tonight, or maybe not even in this budget cycle. That's my two cents.
Ms. Rutgers?
Two for two, Tyson, I'm actually agreeing with you on this one, too. Alert the media. I mean, don't, but, so I had mentioned in the last meeting about us asking Duke to pay for part of it, and the rationale from you guys was that we were getting a check for them for a park that we haven't approved yet, and you didn't want to upset the apple cart. Is it possible to have it both ways? Because, I mean, it's...
To have them pay for additional?
No, for, I mean, they left stumps instead of grinding them out. They've, you know, we asked them to go back on the Riggs Road project and do some maintenance and remediation there. I mean, he has a point that...
I guess we were very gentle and kind in the last meeting. I don't think Duke is going to be, what's the right word? Yeah, up for any kind of donation for this issue.
To grind the stumps that they left?
Well, they put, they put some type of killer of some sort on it. I mean, this was a fast-growing invasive species of Bradford pears and honeysuckle. I think there was one spruce, is that what you said? So, I'm trying not to throw people under the bus, but the police were involved in this situation. When the contractors had to come back to cut down, they requested the city provide them a police escort. This was not an easy experience for Duke. So to think, to ask me to go back and ask them for dollars for this, I just don't know if I could do that.
So those were details that were also not provided to council through that process?
I know.
I know you're being delicate, but like...
I'm trying to be...
Contractors and any police escort, probably would have been good information to know as we're talking about.
I'm trying to, I'm trying not to throw people under the bus, I'm really, I try not to do that. I try to be as, you know, kind, and, I don't know. Yep. Ms. Kyle?
Okay, we keep talking about the safety issue, and at first, I disagreed with Jack, but then I kind of think I know where he's coming with this. But my thing is, my point is, if you have the horse fence there, if I'm a little kid on the bike, I'm not gonna drag my bike through the horse fence to ride down that hill. Right now, I have nothing stopping me, but I, you know, except maybe my parents would have killed me. But I'm just saying, I, since it needs to be beautified, and as Ms. Jasper said, I agree with her, we're beautifying the ugly railroad, whatever, bridge, underpass, we've beautified the other side of the road. This looks horrible, we need to beautify it. We need to put the fence up, and if anybody comes up with a safety issue later, I think the fence is gonna deter people from walking down the hills, is what I think. You know, if you have somebody walking at night, and they kind of see that fence there, they're not gonna go over the rail. I mean, and if they do, they have to be intoxicated or on drugs or something, and then we can't help that, you know, that's their problem. But I'm just saying, I think we need to address it rather quickly, because of the vegetation on the side of that hill. There's enough stuff there, that weeds especially, you know, the trees are dead, and I saw some pretty big, significant stumps there. But the weeds will grow back up, and it's gonna look horrible, and not to mention, you know, mosquitoes and everything else. But I just think we need to beautify it, and put it in the beautification budget, if that's what council wants to do, and prioritize it, because it's ugly, and it needs to be addressed. And we have no control over Duke, and I know what people were talking about when they complained, because a neighbor, one of our neighbors had a beautiful little fir, well, it was a big, giant fir tree. I don't know what kind of fir it is, but they just took one whole part out of it, and it looks ugly, but they had to, because of the power wires, you know. It's not their fault either, you know. This serves, what, 8,000 people? So I can see why they would not want to keep coming back, that costs them more money to keep coming back, and the city can beautify it and make it look nice, and you don't have to worry about trees growing up in the lines. So that's my four cents' worth.
So here's what's kind of, it would be my thought, so it seems like council is sort of pushing this toward, maybe it's a beautification issue, maybe it's we debate it more, and if I'm missing that, please tell me, but, you know, on May 21st, there's a beautification task force meeting that's before the caucus meeting, and it seems like that we could have this on the agenda at both the beautification task force meeting and the caucus meeting to continue the discussion. Again, I'm not trying to push it from tonight, I'm just saying, I'm trying to move to what the next step is. I'm also cognizant that this is a very rare night, that we have three council members not here, and I think it may be helpful to get whatever their input would be at the caucus meeting. But again, as Ms. Jasper Lucas correctly said, neither I or KLC make any decisions in this room, so ultimately, it's up to you all. I mean, we don't even have an action item tonight on legislative, I mean, we just, this is really kind of a discussion that brewed from public comment, so... And I think probably beautification task force, since it's the same night, that way it's... And again, if there's a will of council to follow Ms. Rutgers' thoughts, to do some sort of safety analysis, we can do that. I don't frankly even know who would do that, maybe VIOX and VIOX does that. I'll be honest, I don't know, in 23 years of practice in law, I don't think I've ever done a safety analysis of a public right-of-way, but we certainly can look into that and see what the cost would be for that.
I have another suggestion.
Moving the goalposts, if it's not talking about safety, I mean, to determine what it is that we need to...
If the driveway was off the right-of-way, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have heard any kind of safety concern. We have the driveway on a right-of-way, we have a carport on a right-of-way. It's a whole separate can of worms.
Jack, I'm sorry. Jack, did you just say May beautification? Because looking at the minutes from our last meeting, I'm showing that we're not meeting until June 18th.
I'm sorry, the mayor said we had a May 21st meeting.
Unless, we can always reinstate it and do one, I'm just looking at the minutes.
I'm just trying to streamline, if you could have both meetings in one night in two weeks, it would maybe be helpful, is all I'm thinking, but I don't, I don't, I'm...
May I talk?
I'm sorry, Ms. Wilson.
Okay, that's all right, I raised my hand, I keep getting ignored. We did talk about having the beautification in May. We canceled the parks meeting, but we did talk about having the beautification in two weeks. we did talk about having the beautification in two weeks.
I'm sorry to keep belaboring this. I don't know that it's necessarily worth money to do some kind of safety study on this. I mean, this isn't the only hill in the entire city. We've got bigger, steeper hills all over the place. I mean, there's one right across the street from this, almost exactly across the street from this, that leads into the train tracks. I mean, I guess police could probably provide us with the reports of how many people died falling off that or riding their bikes down it, but I don't think there's any. They're just, I almost worry about the Pandora's Box that we open if we start trying to do safety studies on hillsides, you know, and it's a 12-foot hill, max. I mean, it's not an 18-to-20-foot hill. The hypotenuse, the hypotenuse of that might be 18 feet, but in that case, then I have like a 100-foot hill in my backyard. It's just, it's not quite the safety issue that it's being cracked up to be, I don't think. Thank you.
Okay, so... I just think we should have the meeting, the beautification meeting, the 18th, is that what you said?
May 21st, I believe.
May 21st, okay. Have it, it would be nice if it's here in the council, I think, because then more people can come if they want to come. And discuss it then, and see what we can do. And I wouldn't worry about the safety issue, because like I said, as long as you have a visible whatever there, I don't care if it's an orange fence, purple fence, but for beautification, I like the horse fence, so it matches the property across the road, and just go from there. Is that okay, guys? Yeah, yeah, I think that would be best.
All right, to city beautification. I feel like we've just done a whole 180. It took two months to go around in that 180. Okay, all right. Any other comments? I'm sorry, public comment's over.
I'm sorry, I didn't put my name on the list, but I did put my name on the one that I speak.
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name, can I have the document?
Okay, so my name's Lynn Molliter, and I live on Riggs Avenue, so we've been having an ongoing problem there, thank you, with my neighbor's dogs that live at 3213 Riggs. So she has four to six dogs that jump over her fence. I think that animal control's come out at least a dozen times in the past couple of months. So this has kind of been going on for a couple of years, but it's been getting worse. And so they jump over the fence, she's been sighted, I've, you know, I think there's, the other day, like, three people called animal control last Saturday, the mailman called last week, and the dogs aren't fixed, they bark at the school kids that are walking up, you know, to lend them in in the morning. I mean, they're menacing, and it's like I'm at my wit's end. They don't wear collars, I've tried to catch them, but, so anyway, I've come up here, I filed a report, I don't know what to do, because, like I said, if the dogs bite one of the school, I mean, this is a city problem, you know? And so there's two stop signs, you know, where she lives. The dogs get in the middle of the street and bark at cars, and if somebody's walking a dog up there on a leash, they bark, bark, bark. And I don't think the dogs are mean by any means, I've never seen them go after someone, but it's a huge problem, huge problem, so that's it.
Ryan?
And I don't know what can be done, because I know it goes back to animal control, and like I said, I've had correspondence with all of them, as well as my neighbors, and we don't know what to do, because like five of my neighbors are like, well, what can we do? You know, it's sort of that area, but anybody going up and down Riggs Avenue has probably experienced the dogs in the street.
Okay. Do you have anything else that you want to add? Because I have Lieutenant Ashley in the back that would be more than happy to talk with you further, or if you fill out that information, we can contact you...
Sure.
...once we do a little more investigation on the situation, especially if you've already put in a police report. I'm sure there's been work done already, we just don't have it at our fingertips at this moment.
Yes, yeah, I'm sure it's ongoing, but thank you.
Okay. All right. That concludes public comment. Mayor's report, I have a special visitor for my mayor's report, I have Representative Steve Doan, and he's going to take over my time. The mic is yours, Representative. Thank you so much for being here and being an incredibly awesome advocate for the city of Erlanger in Frankfurt.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I just wanted to give a brief update, and I'll try to keep it brief. We had originally scheduled to have this last month, but I think tornado came in and delayed the whole meeting, so I'm back here now. Just wanted to give the city a brief update on some of the things we did in Frankfurt, particularly with regard to the transportation budget. You know, it was two years ago when I sat up there as a member of our city council, and we took the first step to make sure that our city got a new Stevenson Road. And so, you know, after I won the primary election and was sworn into the general assembly, I had an opportunity to meet with Mayor Fettie, to meet with Senator McDaniel, as well as representatives from the sanitation district and from Transportation 6. And what we did is we sat down and we worked out a plan on exactly what a new Stevenson Road looked like, and exactly how we were going to get that through in the House. It's a project that we all know has been needed to happen for quite some time, and we were successful in able to get that done. And so in this House budget, within House District 69, which encompasses a lot of Erlanger, as well as some other parts in Kenton and Boone, we were able to secure through House Joint Resolution 63, as well as the transportation budget, $944 million in the six-year road plan. In the two-year road plan, which is immediately before us, we were able to secure $30 million to do a new Stevenson Road. $6 million of that will come this year, and then, or $8 million, excuse me, in the next biennium, or the next two years, 2024 and 25, because we're goofy at the state, you guys know that too, because we're all goofy with that. And then another $22 million for that next year, we're actually going to be in construction in '25, '26. So the folks of Erlanger will get that. We also were able to get funding for a new expansion on Riggs, well, not Riggs, but it starts at Riggs and it's going to go down Kenton Land, so that's one that we're going to look at expanding now, and then there's another $50 million in the out years in the six-year road plan to look at expanding that even further. So two big projects that we were able to work collaboratively with, and I want to thank the mayor, and I want to thank this council for your continued support on those projects.
Thank you, and I would be remiss if I did not thank Senator Chris McDaniel. He is so extremely instrumental in Frankfurt with bringing dollars back locally. He has been so successful in so many projects, and especially our transportation dollars. So brilliant projects are going to be getting done that headlong, thanks to our wonderful representatives and Chris McDaniel in the Senate, so we appreciate it. He wasn't able to be here tonight, he has a play of one of his children, so family always comes first, so, thank you. Thank you, Steve. Okay. City administrators' report, Mr. Glenn is out of town today, Mr. Collier is going to take his space.
Thank you, Mayor, and I will always remember this, this is my first Erlanger city council, so thank you for being entertaining, and I really appreciate the debate, it's been fun. So Peter asked me to give some updates specific to our meetings with the budget, our budget presentation to council, known as, I think Budget Boot Camp, is that right, Cara? Is May 15th, that's going to be 5:30 to 8:30. Our budget ad hoc meeting will be May 29th, 5:30 to 8 o'clock on that. Our first budget reading will be June 4th, and then followed by our second reading and passage on June the 18th. So that is everything that is budget-focused, budget-related, we will be very, very focused on the budget for the next few weeks. Councilwoman Wilson asked me to remind folks today, for tomorrow, the PDS Community Engagement Event is here tomorrow, starting at 3 o'clock, that will give an overview of the Kenton County Comprehensive Plan and update, so that is tomorrow here in the council chamber. And then finally, an update from my perspective from the caucus meeting, a couple of weeks ago, council asked me to do some outreach and feedback to our hoteliers about proposed legislation. So I will have some updates and a memo prepared for council to discuss at that caucus meeting. And that's all I have, keep it brief, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Gatlin?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Quinn, anything to report on capital projects?
Sure, I love to talk about Public Works. So Public Works facility, the maintenance bay, they're putting the electric in, all the lighting, all the plugs, all the outlets, all that kind of stuff's going in, in the maintenance bay. The mezzanine floor was poured this week, it's going to be awesome for storage in that facility, getting things up off the floor and out of the way in that area when we move in. And the detention area, the wall around the detention area's been complete, all the caps been put in, so that project's coming along quite nicely. On streets, Circlewood and Northway are finishing up sidewalks, aprons, and any full-depth repairs, they'll be moving on to the asphalt phase after that's completed. Kingsburg, Humphreys Construction's been completing the sidewalks there, they got one cul-de-sac completely done and half of the other, they probably have another three or four pores to complete Kingsburg. Humphreys also got, which I'll talk about here in a second with bids, they got the bid with Lambda, so they're kind of in that area, they're going to be bouncing back and forth. Cahill Commons, the asphalt basketball court's been put in, it's got a cure for 30 days, then they'll come back and they'll color it. They're mulching the playground this week, there's a little bit more left to do, there are signs being shipped in two weeks to us, the new sign for Cahill Commons will be, crews will be putting, Public Works crews will be putting that in with lighting and the sign. Let's see, the shelter at Cahill Commons is scheduled to be painted, we're going to change the roof color, probably to gray with the black post. And then Shearborn Park, crews are, we've been getting materials together for that project, we've ordered the playground equipment, we've ordered the wall materials, we are currently working on the shelter materials. This project is going to be huge for our department, most of it's going to be done in-house, we might do a little bit of concrete work, contract some of that out, but we're looking to start demo of that park after Memorial Day. So kind of phased, it's another phased approach, Phase 1 is this calendar year, ending, of course, July 1st, and then trying to minimize keeping the park closed as minimal as possible. The park has to be demoed, though, there's no way to leave it open, so that's going to start here at the end of the month. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other department head reports? Ms. Kramer?
I just have a quick announcement, I did resend out the April 2024 check register, I know there was a PDF issue for some of the emails, so that has been resent out before this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Good, okay, all right. Are there any reports of task forces? Ms. Nicely?
This wasn't task force, I just wanted to thank Chief Gottse for inviting council and staff to the flashover training. It's always nice to see the firefighters in action and all the training they go through, and as you realize, smoke is not my friend, so it was a great experience, thank you.
Okay. All right, we have one bid this evening, did you already...
Real quick, Humphreys Construction got Lambda there, the low bid, we did have five bidders, and it is within budget, so we'll be moving forward with the section of Lambda between Woodland Hills and Concord. Yes, Concord, yes, that's it.
All right, thank you. All right, does anybody have any unfinished business this evening? Okay, any new business? Mr. Hermes, you have Chapter 43 Code of Ethics?
All right, we've got everybody's favorite topic, ethics. If I had to guess, you know, some of those council members may not have shown up because they knew we were talking about this, but that's just me guessing. Yeah, so, back in December of 2020, we adopted the Title 1, Chapter 43 Code of Ethics. Oh, don't you have to turn this on, don't I? All right, so the purpose of this presentation is to help make sure the city council is aware of the rules and help ensure that we avoid violating the Code of Ethics. I'm Tyson Hermes, I am an Erlanger councilman. A lot of you may not be aware, I'm also the chairman of the Northern Kentucky Regional Ethics Authority. I do not serve on the enforcement board, and I'm not inoculated from getting myself into ethical dilemmas, you know, so I'm not perfect. But one thing that we have done is that we have made some policy changes inside the Northern Kentucky Regional Ethics Authority to make sure that ethical complaints can't be used as political weapons. Whether you may realize it or not, in the past, what people have done, it's usually around campaign time, they file an ethics complaint, and then they let the news know about it. And a lot of times, it's before that candidate even knows that the complaint has been filed, the news has been alerted, and people are trying to use it as a political weapon, which is very unfortunate. Now, there is a policy that says that if the person who files the complaint leaks that to the public or to the news, the complaint is automatically thrown out. So my point in saying that is I have no knowledge of anybody filing any kind of complaint about anything that I'm going to talk about tonight, and I have no intent in filing a complaint. So the brief history here, back in December 2020, we passed the ordinance, that gives you some of the details of it, if you want to go through the details, we can, but also, you know, sometimes it's hard to remember who was on council back when some of these things happened, but we've got it all right here. Some of the terminology you're going to hear me talk about, an officer of the city is referred to, and that is us, that's the legislative body members, we are officers of the city. It also discusses family members. Family member is a domestic partner, spouse, parent, child, brother, sister, mother-in-law, father-in-law, son-in-law, grandparent, and grandchild. And even in all of our perfection, our legislative perfection, somehow we left out daughter-in-law, but that's the way it's written. April 16th, 2024, at our caucus meeting, a council member spoke during public comment. It was said, "Tonight, I would like to speak as a citizen involving an issue with Duke and the city. In full disclosure, which I love to be transparent to everyone, the two properties on top of the hill are owned by my dad and my brother." The council member advocated for tax dollars being spent for the primary benefit of their family. It seems to be a violation of 43019A. It says, "No officer, employee, board member of the city, or any city agency shall represent any person or business other than the city in connection with any cause, proceeding, application, or other matter pending before the city or any city agency." Subsection C- Subsection C of that same section says, "Nothing in this section shall prohibit an officer or board member or employee from representing himself or herself in matters concerning his or her own interests." So, to recount that, we cannot speak as a citizen for anyone else or a matter that doesn't involve our direct personal interests. We are council members in this chamber. When a question arises, if there's a conflict of interest, it is best to err to the side of caution. In fact, 4315H specifically says, "An officer, board member, or contractor with a conflict of interest must withdraw from discussion or vote at a meeting by public announcement on the record with the reason for withdrawal." On April 16th, 2024, at the caucus meeting, the same Earlanger council member suggested there's a safety issue, cars slipping off the hillside, kids on bikes, requesting that the city install a guardrail or four-board fence. It needs to be done before someone gets hurt. I'm requesting something be done sooner rather than later. It shouldn't have to wait for budget, it shouldn't have to wait for months. This hints that the council member is watching out for the best interest of the city, so why speak as a citizen on this matter? 4315B says, "No officer, board member, or employee shall intentionally use or attempt to use his or her official position with the city to secure unwarranted privileges or advantages for himself, herself, or others." I know this is really exciting, you know, the jaw-dropping graphics, it's just the black and white, I'm sorry. I should've warned you about that ahead of time. 4315G, furthermore, this section states, "An officer or employee must refrain from acting on or discussing formally or informally a matter before the city, if acting on the matter or failing to act on the matter may personally or financially benefit any of the persons or entities listed in Division C above," and one of those is, number two is, a family member, that's one of those entities listed. "Such an officer or employee should join the public if the withdrawal occurs at a public meeting or leave." It's important for us as city council members to avoid mixing issues involving our family with the public office, and I would highly encourage you to steer clear of advocating for your family members in these chambers, even if you would do it the same for every resident of Earlanger. So, I would ask that we all refresh ourselves on the ethics code. Please reread Chapter 43. If you use it as a weapon, then shame on you. The purpose is to make the city a better place, make us better city officials. We've seen some potential violations, 4315B, 4315G, 4315H, and 4319A. This is seemingly an innocent mistake, but has every indication of several Code of Ethics violations. So what do we do now? As I mentioned, I don't want other council members to make the same mistake, you know, well, one council member did it, so why can't I? As I also mentioned, I'm not aware of any ethics complaint being filed, nor do I have any intent of filing an ethics complaint. I simply would like to prevent perpetuating unethical behavior. The enforcement of this ordinance is solely the responsibility of the Northern Kentucky Regional Ethics Authority. The penalty, if the Northern Kentucky Regional Ethics Authority Board of Ethics determines a violation has occurred, it's deemed a civil offense and a civil fine up to one month's pay for each offense. A proven violation is also deemed sufficient cause for city council removal. It's serious. Thank you for your time and attention. You have a question? Go ahead, Mrs. Nicely.
Mr. Hermes, I am aware that you are publicly attacking me with the ethics speech. I haven't violated any ethics codes. In fact, I've been very transparent. I am not sure if this is attacked personally, politically, or both. If I feel you are retaliating due to me speaking up regarding a safety issue in our city, I am insulted because I spoke up, you are focusing on trying to target me instead of addressing the issue at hand that exists in our city. I would've spoke up for any citizen, and I do in our city. I take being an elected official seriously. I am very hands-on and an advocate for all the citizens, residents that come to me. I take particular offense that you would say I would do anything negligent in the city I represent, I grew up in, I raised my children in, I work in, and I still live in. And getting back to the other part of it, I want to stress the property is owned by the city. The city council seems to acknowledge that there is at least a beautification issue, which is benefit to the city, not individuals. I know you are targeting me. If I have done anything, then I would be addressed by the Code of Ethics Board. I am not on trial, you are not an attorney, and I do-
...complaints filed against you, specifically for, at least in the last 12 years, is that part of the requirements for being the chairperson? I will say that I filed an ethics complaint against you, not for political purposes, and I will acknowledge that you weren't found guilty of any of the ethics complaints that I am aware of. However, in my complaint, there was a dissenting opinion, and the person basically said that you clearly violated the city's ethics ordinance. The other opinion, the majority opinion, basically said that our facility use policy was not specific enough to find you in violation of it. So it was actually the city's fault, and you should've known better. So, I find it reprehensible that you used your presentation to attack a city council member, a peer of yours, and that's clearly what you did. Ms. Nicely did not advocate just for the primary benefit of her family. And my question is, we, a lot of us have family members that live in the city limits, maybe you don't, I don't know, maybe you've never been in that position before, but I have a lot of family members that live not in my house, but in the city limits of Earlanger. So are you suggesting that Ms. Nicely would not have done the same thing for any other resident, and that she was only advocating for the benefit of her family? I'm also asking, are you saying that we, as council members, should just sit on our hands when our own family members are affected, just like any other resident would be, and not say anything? I don't believe that Ms. Nicely did anything that she wouldn't have done for another resident. I think she would've done exactly the same thing. I don't think she advocated for the primary benefit of her family. So, I just, I find it very disturbing that you, of all people, are the one throwing out these allegations. And if anybody would like to see the decision from 2020 from Mr. Hermes's complaint that I filed against him, I'm happy to share it.
Yeah, that was an interesting complaint, being that we had never even spoken two words to each other. I thought that was interesting that you didn't even address-
I didn't need to speak to you to know that you violated the ethics ordinance.
The Ethics Board ruled in my favor, and whether-
Barely.
Is this the way law works, Mr. Blankenship?
I'm not on trial, are you?
Yeah. The way the law works is, the majority of the people agreed that I was not guilty, so it's unfortunate, I'm sorry. So, unfortunate for you. So you asked if it was a requirement. I thought after a little while, I didn't realize I was gonna get berated with a bunch of questions, so I started to try to write them down. But I do want to address every one of them. So, to my knowledge, it's not a requirement that there be an ethics violation filed against someone to become the chairman. But it is a requirement to have an ethics violation filed against you, to realize there's problems in the system. And instead of sitting back and doing nothing about it, I took it upon myself, and I took my own time, to try to help improve an issue aboard that had issues, you know? And so I've spent the last few years working to try to correct some of those issues. It doesn't pay, this is not a paid position, this is my own voluntary act. I don't recommend that anybody necessarily sit on their hands if they have an issue with family members in the city, but it's not right for the family members to have you be the voice on this council. I know you are morally superior, but the words in our ethics ordinance actually do mean something. They do mean something, the words matter. And Mrs. Nicely's words matter as well. And the things that she said and did, they point toward there being an ethical issue. She really should have withdrawn herself from the discussion, and I'm curious to see what's gonna happen at the Beautification Task Force that she's the chair of. That will come to a vote, that is a public meeting, that is Were there other questions in there that I didn't address? I answered them all? Okay, thanks. I don't know whose hand was up first. Go ahead.
Oh, mine's quick. So, you mentioned at the beginning of your presentation that any ethics complaint that is filed but happens to be picked up by the press will be thrown out. With the Ad District and the NKRAA being part of a quasi-governmental agency and subject to open records requirements, how is that not unconstitutional to the state? Or do we have, I mean, who made the, who was the arbiter in that? I'm just legitimately serious here.
Yeah.
Because it sounds to me like they're-
It's a great question. It's never come up. I mean, I don't believe they've ever had anyone file that open records request, and I guess you could just randomly do that and see if anything-
Yeah, I think we do it quarterly. People in council do it quarterly. But, no, when you said that, it made me legitimately concerned that records would be thrown out that may or may not be legitimate ethics complaints because-
Well, in that case, yeah, maybe I missed-
But you're on the board. I wanna, I need to understand this, because if we need to go to the AG over it, I need to, is that part of the bylaws of the board, or where was that decision made?
That is a policy. That is a policy.
Okay, so it sounds like we need to, okay, I'll have a follow-up conversation with the Ad District.
Great, I hope you get involved.
Can I add, can I add a little bit?
Sure.
Because I assisted in helping build that policy. It's not that it gets thrown out, it just doesn't get moved on to the next, to the enforcement board. It's not that it throws, it gets thrown out. They identify if it's an issue that needs to go. It's not like it goes in the garbage.
No, but it sounds to me like it's not-
It's a move on to the board.
It was the very first thing that you led with, and it just didn't, it just-
My point is that-
-made me question if it was unconstitutional.
I'm just trying to clarify that. I'm not here talking because I've heard that there's going to be an ethical complaint, or that there has been one, or that I'm planning to file one.
Okay.
I'm not.
That's fine, I can-
I'm just trying to clarify that.
Yeah, I'm gonna wanna see the policy just for my own entertainment, but thank you for the clarification.
I'm sure I can connect you with who to talk to. Mrs. Nicely, do you plan to attack me again?
No, I'm not attacking you at all, I'm defending myself because I have done no wrong. And you accuse me of conflict of interest. Do you know the difference from remote interest and conflict of interest? Because I didn't break any conflict of interest.
That's not up to me to judge.
But you're acting like a lawyer, you're acting like you're putting me on trial, and that is not the truth.
I know I might seem as smart as a lawyer, but I'm not.
I identified that you were targeting me, you didn't have to be a secret, it was all the writing what I said, and I will live with what I said.
Well, there are a few things, if you're okay with it, I'll continue on. There are a few things that I took out of this because there was no way for me to talk about it without mentioning you by name. If you'd like me to continue, I can cite a couple others.
If you had everything there, then I think this is a discussion for the Ethics Board, not brought up against council. That's how you address things the proper way.
You don't need to tell me what to do. Anything else? Mrs. Kyle?
I just want to share the history, because I'm the historian here on council. In the past, I remember, and I guess I shouldn't mention any names, because this is a long time ago, and they might not like me mentioning their name, but there was a person on council. They had a relative that was involved in the city administration. A lot of you probably know who I'm talking about anyway, but I always admired him because he dismissed himself from any vote that would involve that city administration. With that being said, however, I feel like, as a council member, I have a right to address city council as long as I say, hey, I'm doing this as a private citizen, and, you know, and being transparent. To me, that's not an ethics violation, but maybe I'm not reading it correctly. So, in that regard, I don't think anyone did anything wrong. My thing is, you shouldn't vote on anything that involves your particular immediate family or a relative. So if you have somebody that's working at the city, or somehow you're involved in that particular event, then be very careful and don't vote. But other than that, I think we all need to realize we're on the same side. We all work for Earlanger. The only reason I've been up here for 28 years, and this is not a political speech, is because I care about the city, and I feel that most of us are here because we care about the city. So, you know, with that being said, we're not enemies, we're all working together. So, I would just like to remind people that we're not fighting each other, but I like bouncing ideas off of each other, but not, you know, pointing any fingers or anything like that. So, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, legislation.
Hi, we have for a second reading here an ordinance of the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending Earlanger Ordinance Number 2519, establishing an economic incentive and grant for small businesses to remain in the City of Earlanger and to relocate to the City of Earlanger and make capital improvements to their buildings and using matching dollars for facade and exterior improvements. This is a program that has been in place for several years, that, and this is kind of a housekeeping issue, just to clean up, to make it clear that the grant shall not exceed $10,000, and also add that all applicants shall be a business in good standing with an occupational license and all applicable taxes up to date.
All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Adopt as read. Ms. Rutgers, Ms. Kyle, any discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Ms. Rutgers?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Next, we have municipal order of the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the appointment of Noah Osterhag as a member of the Board of Adjustment for the City of Earlanger to fill the vacancy there and resulting from the resignation of Jeremy Armrooster. This will be for the unexpired term, and it will run through January of 2026.
I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read. Mr. Hermes, Ms. Rutgers, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next one's a bit of a housekeeping issue as well, it's a municipal order, and I say that because I believe all these people are currently serving, we're just kind of cleaning up things a bit here. Correct, Ms. Hoffman? A couple of new ones, my apologies. So it's a municipal order of the city council, the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky- Kentucky, approving the appointment of Meg Casper, Jonah Herman, I apologize. Jonah Herman, Todd Herman, Tom Montell, and Beth Rosblock as members of the Urban Force Commission for the City of Earlanger. And all of these terms, these are staggered terms per our ordinance. You can see that Ms. Rosblock's term runs through December 31st of 2024. Montell and Casper's terms run through December 31st, 2025, and the Hermans' terms run through December 31st of 2026.
All right. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Ms. Reckers? Ms. Wilson? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Are there any announcements this evening? Ms. Wilson, did you want to have an announcement? Oh, can you turn on your mic? Thanks.
I would like to invite everyone to come out to the Juneteenth Fest Freedom Day Celebration, which is going to be held during June 14th through the 16th. And it's beginning on Friday at 11 o'clock to 1:00. And there will be a Kentucky Career Center, at the Kentucky Career Center. And that's at 1324 Madison Avenue in Covington, Kentucky. And on Saturday at 11:00 to 11:00 p.m., at the Covington Landing, there's going to be a Black Excellence Awards, Juneteenth Bingo, Fashion Show, children's activities, live entertainment with spoken word. And on Sunday, June 16th, at First Baptist Church in Ellesmere, there's going to be a community worship service, a community cookout, children's activities, bounce house, live entertainment. And we hope that each and every one of you will come out and join the festivities that weekend and enjoy yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I appreciate it. All right. Any other announcements? Ms. Reckers?
Budget meeting is a week from tomorrow and open to the public, starts at 5:30.
We are pumped. All right. Any other announcements? You're pumped. All right. Do I entertain a motion that we adjourn? Ms. Reckers? Ms. Kyle? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Have a good evening.